Happy hump day, everyone. Hope all of Springmore is doing well on this Wednesday. May 13th, 2020. This is our, I don't know, I've lost track of how many town halls we've had. Probably about the fifth, sixth, maybe seventh one. But we do these every Tuesday, excuse me, every Wednesday at two o'clock to update all the residents on what is going on here at Springmore and all the changes and updates regarding COVID-19 and any important announcements we want to go over. Just if you haven't watched before, or if you just have seen some episodes or episodes, some broadcasts on YouTube, just to kind of let you know the format. We do this, again, like I said, once a week, just so I can get in front of everybody and talk to everybody and y'all can at least see me and kind of know what's going on. Again, it's an auditorium, which is odd, but miss seeing everybody. But we'll have a good opportunity here in the next week or so to start walking around and seeing some folks. We're going to be doing a nice little surprise for y'all. So we'll talk about that here in a little bit. So it is nice to talk to y'all. I wish I could see y'all and look forward to seeing y'all soon. So got some exciting stuff to go over this week. I want to start off with something really exciting and I want to end with something exciting. So I want to start off with the, with the employee gift fund that we've, that we, that we've kicked off. So I have been more than pleased with the overwhelming positive responses we've got from all the residents and families so far. As of just a short time ago, in meeting with Vidia, we've had over 130 people donate to our gratitude fund for our employees and I could not be more excited about that. So we have till the 22nd to do that. Again, this was a way for residents and family members to show appreciation for all the extra hard work and, and times they've come in every day and, and not skipped a beat during this time. We hear so many horrible things about furloughs and people not being able to get services and nurses and CNA's walking out of nursing homes and just terrible things. And you know, we have not skipped a beat with that. They come in every day, not knowing if they may bring it in, expose it to somebody, which is nerve wracking, if they take it back to their family. And I've just been overwhelmed by the, by the response that the staff has had. School has been out for almost two months now, if not more. We've not had the first hiccup with childcare or daycare. It's just been unbelievable. You know, we, I worry more about a snow day, it seems like, than I have any day the past two months about childcare or employees coming into work. It's just been, it's been unbelievable. It feels like one continuous snow day, but with no interruptions with staff, which has been absolutely amazing. So anyway, I just wanted to just, I thought we'd start off on that. I just want to say thank you very much, everyone that has donated so far. And I hope that y'all continue to, to give if you like over the next week. I wanted, want to start off by, by clearing up a few things and I'm going to answer some questions that a couple of people asked me in no particular order in more of a summary format to hopefully kind of explain or maybe help better understand what we're trying to do and hopefully just to make y'all feel more confident about everything. If there's any doubt, which I hope there would never, never be about, about what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is give all the employees a gift. I probably made the mistake, or I did make the mistake, obviously, of putting the word bonus in there. The, the whole intention of bonus was to, was to grab the attention of everyone to know that we want to do something extra for the staff. So a bonus is something extra when reality is, is a gift. So I stress gift over bonus and the fact of way, the way we're asking for money. We're asking for cash and we're asking for checks made out to cash because we want it to be a gift. And a gift from a resident to a staff member is not, is not tax deductible. So that's what we're wanting to do to show our gratitude, which is showing thanks to people. So that is why, again, the board bonus probably was not the best way to, to describe it, but I thought it would get the attention. So it's a gift. So let me stress gift instead of bonus. Also want to say that I've heard from a couple of residents about some concerns about, you know, taxes and how we're doing it. And I would just hope that everyone would know that we would never do anything wrong or not do anything right or not check with experts before doing something like this. Thirty-six year history of Springmore and a great reputation. We're definitely not going to tarnish anything by trying to do something good for someone. So, so by all means, did we check with our accountants and everyone? Absolutely. There's no way I'd send out something to so many people and it not be accurate or right. Perhaps using the word bonus again was wrong, but everything we're doing is coming from the goodness of our heart to give to our employees. So, and a lot of people have asked about a certain amount of money that we're trying to raise and while I've not announced that, that is no secret other than the fact I do not want anyone to feel pressured to give to this fund. I feel it's very important to not ask anybody for anything that they're uncomfortable doing, especially during this time. So having a goal of $50,000 or $30,000 and stressing people out of, oh God, we've only got 20, when we're worried about, when we're worried about not being able to see families and we can't leave to go to the hospital without being quarantined. I, I thought that was just, that was just unneeded stress on everybody. We have never done anything like this for employees before. So we wanted to, we weren't sure how, how would, how would be received. It's been extreme, like I said, extremely positive so far. But, 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 but the goal is not to make you feel like you have to give. If you want to give, please give. If you don't want to give, you don't have to give. Just to give you an idea and have some people say, well, what is a meaningful amount? A meaningful amount is, is, is something that we want to give to the employees. And to give you an approximation, we have about 500 employees, full-time and part-time, that will be eligible for this gift. So I hope that will help a little bit. By all means, once we're finished with raising the money, we're going to tell everybody proudly how much money we raised and we're going to let everybody know how much each full-time person gets and each part-time person gets. So we're excited to share all that. The whole point was just not to make anybody feel pressured to give or, or, or not to give. So anything, so I'll go through and answer some of this. I just want to kind of start off with that because I'm hoping a lot of that will clear up any questions that some people may have had. And those are all great concerns and all good questions. So I appreciate anything that people send me and I like to be as you, hopefully y'all know, as transparent as possible and make sure y'all know what's going on and would never not share anything with y'all. So anyway, we've talked about the goal and the desired amount, 500 people, full and part-time that are eligible. Hope that kind of helps a little bit with some of the questions we wanted to know. And, and please know that the, yeah, that some, and then some people wanted to know about what would each person be, would all Springmore employees be, will they be receiving the bonus? Yes, all eligible Springmore employees, including department managers, will be eligible for the employees, full-time and part-time. There will be a different amount for full-time and part-time due to the amount of time that they have given to Springmore. That's no different than, than we do our Christmas bonuses or any kind of benefits that we provide to, to employees. So that could be debated, that could be kicked around a lot, but we decided to do a greater amount for the full-time employees and a lesser amount for part-time employees. Again, we have meaningful amounts that we think that will be, that we think will make them feel positive about that. And I don't think that will be ill-received at all. That's just kind of a, a common practice amongst full and part-time, any kind of benefits you get here. But no, but part-time people that are eligible, they will, they will be, they will definitely be included. All Springmore employees will be included with that, including department managers. So just wanted to make sure that, that everybody knew that. The whole idea behind the cash and the check, I, I wanted to just kind of talk about that again. Again, it's, it's to make it a gift for employees that it does have to be taxed. We're, we're wanting to give the employee as much as they can. So that's the whole reason for doing that. It's no different than you perhaps giving your grandchildren birthday money, graduation money, money to go on a vacation. That's a gift from one person to the next. So that's no different than what we're trying to do here. We want them to take full advantage of that. And even though you don't get a tax deduction from it, we hope it's coming from your heart as a, as a, as a, as a mode of gratitude. Again, it's a gratitude gift or bonus as I use. So just, just please be mindful of that, of, of, of why we did that. Had somebody ask about sending it to families and why we did that? I decided to send this to families for a couple of reasons. I've been informing all the families since pretty much the beginning, not the independent families as much because we didn't have everybody's email addresses. But now we have well over 500 email addresses that we've been transparent and been giving all the information to all the family members, from every memo to the employee that tested positive a couple of weeks ago. So I'm trying to be consistent with everything and I'm trying to be transparent with everything. So that was one of the reasons we sent it to the families. The main reason we sent it to the families was I have had for five years, from the 14 years I've been doing this in my career, families always wanting to give to staff. And I always have to be the bad guy to say, no, we cannot take tips. No, we cannot accept anything. So this one time that we decided to do this nice gratitude gift, I wanted to extend that to families. I get it all the time, more so obviously now than ever with everything going on. So I decided to extend it to family members. If they want to give, great. If they don't want to, I totally understand. But those are the reasonings behind that. I feel really good about that. And, and again, it's just something we've never done before and something that they always, always ask about. So this was a perfect opportunity for them to do that. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about, about Vidia and, and, and her helping us. I hope most of y'all know Vidia. Vidia's been here 15 years. And if you don't know Vidia, she is probably, not probably, she's by far the most dedicated person that I know here at Springmore. And even though she's not a Springmore employee, I don't look at her as anything different than that. She is, if you know her, you know how loyal she is. I think, I can't think of a more honest person to help us with this. And she offered to help us with it. She, a little story about Vidia, I think most of y'all know that we had Wells Fargo here before. Wells Fargo decided to close all their branches within, within boutique places like this, like long-term care communities or hospitals or, and our different businesses like that. So Vidia decided to leave Wells Fargo since they were pulling out here and just so she could work with all the residents here and went and, and we, part of the negotiation with First Citizens was, we want you to come in, you got to have Vidia. So Vidia switched banks, switched her whole company she's worked for, for 15 years, doesn't even need to work, to be quite honest, and went and worked for First Citizens just so she could continue the relationship with y'all. She'll tell you that, straight up. So, so, so that's the type of person that Vidia is. So having her help with this is a blessing. I mean, I can't think of anybody better. She's just, she's just an unbelievable person. So I'm very glad to have her and I don't think anybody, if you don't know about her, I just wanted to tell you a little about her commitment to Springmore and, and just how amazing she is. So hopefully that will kind of clear up any, any questions about why we had Vidia help with that. Again, I can't think of anybody better. So, so that, that includes, concludes everything regarding the, the employee gift or gratitude fund. Again, I said bonus, but it's a gift. Hope that, hope, you know, all of y'all are, hope that's clear. And I'm going to have Holly send out an update, again, as she normally does. And we'll send out a little memo, just summarizing that in no particular order to hopefully clear up any, any miscommunication or anything that was maybe questioned early on. So, so we'll move on to some more stuff that is, some more detailed things, day-to-day stuff. Pathways, we continue to have amazing stuff going on with pathways. Here are so many good things about the, the little treats and little surprises that show up at the, the residence doorsteps. Leah's done a great job about that and a couple of highlights. Mother's Day was amazing. She had these Christmas trees with Mother Day's cards. There are over 300 cards that, that families sent in for their mothers here at Springmore. They've all, they were all, all the cards were moved pretty quickly after they were sent in and all the trees are being taken down now. But it was just a great, great way to do Mother's Day. So we had that going on. We are still accepting submissions for the poetry contest. The last day to get, get yours submitted is Friday, May 29th. Email Leah, leah.willis@springmore.org, or you can send it by the in-house mail. So I have already seen one nice entry from my friend Putney and it was pretty good. And I'm going to say that is going to be a tough one to beat. So let's see how many people send it in and, and I'm not sure who's judging those, but we'll see who the winner is. So make sure you send in your poetry submission by May 29th to Leah. Email or drop it in-house mail. Next, we have some new DVDs of Dr. Engel. I know he's a huge hit here at Springmore when he comes live. These will be shown on 1341 and they'll be shown Tuesdays and Thursdays evening, Tuesday and Thursday evenings at 7:15. So something nice to watch after dinner. Look forward to having him back here live and talking to y'all. Those are always just such well-attended events. That's one of the events we unfortunately have to turn people away because it's so well-attended. So everybody has a chance now to see him Tuesday and Thursday at 7:15 on 1341. The new bingo game starts this week, the week of May 18th, and new cards will be provided. So May 18th bingo will start over. So look for your new cards. I'm not sure who the last winner was, but congratulations to who that was. Hope you got something really nice. I'm not going to offer any more gifts. I got, Jennifer was happy to make the pineapple upside-down cake for Ms. Everett, but you know, I, I probably should, should ask her the next time. So we'll, as she continues to give me nice treats, I don't want to upset her. So, but do have some good stuff that we'll be presenting to y'all the Friday, next Friday, May 22nd, the last day of the campaign, by the way. At one o'clock, the administration staff is going to be delivering ice cream to your apartments. So we're really looking forward to that. That's what I alluded to earlier on in the broadcast about being able to see some people. Leah split us up in teams. Don't get too excited, but me and Randy will be doing the houses and villas on the golf cart. So I'm making sure we have the ice cream music already and I just hope that we have enough ice creams by the time we make it down to the last house. So I think Ms. Hornthal is down around the end. So hopefully we'll make sure that we don't eat all the ice cream before we make it to you, me and Randy. But we do have a lot of other people, admin staff, going to be breaking up hallways. So again, one o'clock next Friday, May 22nd. If you would not, not want ice cream, not sure why you wouldn't, just put a little note on there saying, do not disturb, no ice cream. And I'm sure that the volunteers will be happy to eat your allotment. So mark your calendar for that. And then again, we'll be making new deliveries this week to keep you busy. So Leah's got a ton of stuff with books and puzzles and all kinds of cool things to try to keep everybody busy. So look forward to that this week. Next is our fitness update with Kerry Ritchie. Super, super excited to be able to again, to be able to start small group exercises again. Once the county and the state lifted the, had the, the ordinance of 10 or, I guess the state again, never went less than 10, but the county was all, did no gathering. But once that was lifted, we can do 10 or less. We have decided to start back small exercise groups and we're starting that Monday, May 18th. So next Monday, we'll start back our 10 or less. So as you'll see, this is a perfect example of how we'll start progressing back to the where we left off before everything was just cut off completely. So if you go back to all your memos and there's like 17 of them, you'll see we tried to slowly just stop things, but not stop everything. But, so we'll slowly start building back up where we'll just kind of backtrack from where we went. So this is a perfect example of that. You'll find the new schedule in your in-house mail today. Due to space and restrictions, we're making reservations for the fitness class. That's just to avoid confusion and people getting turned away. So we're going to have a reservation of, of, of no more than 10. So please call 7147 to reserve your spot. Again, that's 7147. This is a one-time reservation until the schedule, until the schedule or restrictions change. You do not need to call each week. So if you want to continue to do that class, you'll, you'll be set in there and you can do it each week. So you don't have to call every week to do the Monday class. But again, really excited to offer that again, starting Monday, 7147. The fitness team is hosting, the fitness team is hosting a walking event this Friday, this Friday, May 15th. So stop by the North Village Pool Breezeway between one and three. Refreshments will be provided. You can walk with a partner or one of the fitness instructors. Please wear your mask when you come. So again, just make sure that you have on your mask when you come down outside. You can choose to wear that if you like or not. I tend not to wear mine outside in the fresh air if I'm not around somebody too close. So this coming Friday, May 15th, between one and three, please come by the Pool Breezeway. Hopefully it'll be nice weather so you can get out. And lastly, congratulations to our first two fitness bingo winners, Ms. Jean Salter and Harriet Ross of South Village. Jean's one of the first residents I met here. Ms. Harriet Ross is a fellow Springmore employee. It's debatable if she'll be eligible for the bonus or not, so we'll have to, we'll have to scan that pretty close and see. But Jean Salter and Harriet Ross, that was a joke, by the way. If you haven't completed your fitness bingo card, keep working on it. We're looking for three more winners. So, so congratulations to Ms. Salter and Ms. Harriet Ross. Lastly, we want to talk as far as regarding pathways, our spiritual wellness updates. The chaplains continue to do Zoom call and discussion groups tomorrow at 10:30. Call Juliana or Lori if you'd like to participate and need help connecting to the call. Hopefully y'all have got pretty familiar with Zoom. I know I have the past few months. So it's a really neat tool to interact with people. So tomorrow at 10:30, Zoom discussion group. Our usual, usual events on Sunday, 10 a.m. Sunday School on 1341 and Sunday, 7 p.m. Vespers on 1341. We have a special guest preacher, Mr. Alan Page will be preaching Sunday. So look for copies of hymns by the post office in North and South Village. So thank you, Mr. Page, for participating and helped preach on Sunday. I'm sure everyone will look forward to seeing you on Sunday at seven. And then a couple of messages of encouragement. The weekly mailing from chaplains will go out this week. It will continue to include both secular and sacred insights as we navigate through this pandemic together. And lastly, please send your ideas for encouraging or inspirational thoughts to the chaplains, which we can share with Springmore residents, Springmore residents in our weekly mailings. Those have been really well received. The thank you cards from residents to staff, the encouragement to other residents, the, the cards that we've got from, 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 from young kids that are out of school for encouragement have been really good. We've been passing those around. So any type of just encouragement that you can write really neat. It's kind of an old-school way of just kind of writing a note or a thank you card or it's like having a pen pal, you know? It's just something neat to really put your personal touch to it, to write words of encouragement. So, so please continue to do that. That goes a long way and I think much more than, than y'all realize. So thank you. So I want to move into dining next. I have a special guest coming up after I make a few quick announcements. Don't forget, starting this Monday, we're going to start our breakfast. Our breakfast from the bistro in the grill, take this off here. It's just a little flyer about that. And as you will recall, there are going to be four specials. They're all called quarantine specials. We have four specials and they're each consist of something different. We're going to keep those and not be interchangeable. So no substitutions as it's just the amount of time to prepare them and deliver them. Just remember, it starts this Monday. It will be from 7:45 to 10:00. The last delivery will go out at 10:30 and they'll begin taking orders every morning at 7:45. So to place your orders for houses, villas and all of North Village, dial 3,000. And to place your order for South Village, dial 7541. Again, that starts Monday and all the prices are à la carte and they are listed on the back of those little pamphlet here. So all à la carte pricing and that will just come off your meal account, just like as it would any other breakfast. So that's really exciting. And something even more exciting that I didn't even know about to this week, Jennifer always surprises me with stuff. We are going to do premium entrees for two weeks. So starting next Wednesday, the 20th, the 20th, the 21st and the 22nd. And also following the next week, May 27th, 28th and 29th, we'll be doing premium entrees. They'll be available for dinner only and you need to place your order by Friday, the Friday at 4:30 the, the week prior. So to place your order, calls, call the cell phone number 919-971-1328, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 9 a.m. and 11 a.m. and 2 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. The menu will be small, it'll be a smaller version of the current premium menu and we distribute before the end of the day today. I think Adam was getting those out now, so some of y'all may already have those. I'm not sure if he's putting them at your doorstep or in your mailbox, but they will be out today. So again, just to reiterate, premium entrees will be starting again next Wednesday and they'll go Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, the 20th, 21st and the 22nd. And then next week, we'll do it again, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, which is the 27th, 28th and 29th. We'll see how this week, how those two weeks go and that may be the most we can do for a while. Maybe we can continue it. Didn't want to commit to anything long-term and just want to see how two weeks win and then we'll, we'll reevaluate it before the, after these two weeks to see if we can continue it and see, see what the demand is, if it's overwhelming, if it's just not a lot of people interested in it. I hope you will be. I hope you can see that we're continuing to provide more stuff for you to select from the menu and now offering breakfast and offering the premium entrees and now having the juices and stuff. We continue to try to expand that. And then hopefully as things move forward in different phases, just as the exercise classes, we'll be able to, to open up dining facilities. Remember, we do have a license from the Wake County, so we do fall under things such as a restaurant. So we do have license for that. Obviously they check our kitchens and get the inspections. They have them up on the wall, just like any other restaurant. So once we get to, when we can do gatherings of 50 or less, we will have a couple of options. We're already working on options of opening the dining room again. Probably going to do two seedings for North Village and South Village for, for supper and for lunch. So we'll have a couple of options of coming to the dining room or coming to do takeout or doing the meal delivery. So we're working on that. So when they do lift that, we'll be ready to go. Just to let you know what the abbreviated entrees, appetizers and desserts are to not keep you waiting, because I know you're interested, we're going to do the filets, the six and the eight ounce. I highly recommend the eight ounce filet. So we'll do filets, scallops, lobster tail and salmon. So those, those were four of the most popular items we had on the, on the agenda. And if you got a lot of money left over, just do the filet and the lobster tail. That's probably what I would do. So yeah, looks good. Appetizers, we're going to have a Caesar salad and shrimp cocktail. And for desserts, we have three different choices, key lime pie, keep that kind of light, carrot cake and chocolate cake. So all those choices will be available for the premium entree. So look for that next Wednesday. All right? Well, that is all the announcements I have. We'll take some calls after this next segment here, 7054. But I am very, very excited to announce and to present our new executive chef, J.B., JP Humberto. And JP's here with us live, so I'm going to ask him to come up and we're going to get him to talk for a few minutes and let you get to know him a little bit. So JP, if you want to come on up, I will, as JP comes up, I'm going to, I'm going to demonstrate how to properly wear a mask. Somebody asked me about that. So if you just take your mask and use the little metal part, put it up over your nose, get it here, this microphone on, and make sure this part is down here, kind of cinch it to your nose, make sure it's covering your nose and your mouth right underneath your chin and it's kind of equally balanced on your ears there. So make sure your nose and your mouth is covered up. I think that's pretty self-explanatory, but I know some people, it is hard to breathe in these, I realized for a long period of time. That's why I say if you go outside, don't feel like you have to unless you're close to somebody. I'll say I got mine on because I'm not six feet from JP. So we're trying to practice our social distancing properly. But anyway, that was just a little quick tutorial. I'm sure that y'all are better at putting on the mask than I am. But JP, welcome. Glad to have you here, sir. JP's got a microphone. So I just wanted to ask JP a few questions and then, then, then everybody get to meet him more in person as, as things kind of get back to normal. But JP, thanks for being here and I'm glad you're here at Springmore. Just take just a few seconds, just a few minutes and just tell us a little bit about yourself and mainly a little bit about your background and kind of some of your experiences before coming to Springmore.
All right, well, I've been doing healthcare for almost 10 years. I was the chef at Duke Hospital, Wilson Medical Center. I'm actually originally from New York and I moved to North Carolina to work for Duke and I love it down here. It's a great place to be. I've also done, I was the chef for the New York Mets. I've done the Super Bowl, opened a hotel in China in 2001. I've been around, so I got a lot of experience.
That's awesome. Tell us, one thing I was interested in your, in your resume, you, you had a food truck used to do at the Carolina Rail Halt, which I think now is the North Carolina Football Club. And you, and I think you specialize in barbecue and competitions. Tell us a little bit about that. That's something, I know these folks, they, they're big barbecue fans like I am, so that will probably strike a chord with them.
Well, believe it or not, even Well, believe it or not, even, even though I'm from New York, I'm a three times barbecue champion with the Railhawks. I did, I did some of those events and I beat a lot of barbecue masters. So I got a lot of experience on that. I mean, it's one of the things that I really love, love to do. Spend time with the barbecue, you know, take care of it and, and just feed the people with it. So it's, it's just an amazing thing to do.
Yeah, I thought that was super interesting because I know how big barbecue is here in the Carolinas and all the, you know, the east and the west. And for me back home, it's the Piedmont, the, the mid-state and the upstate with barbecue sauce. So that's kind of interesting. If you, if you ever had the barbecue at Backyard Bistro out by PNC Arena before a Hurricanes game or a concert, it's really, really good. They have a food truck that's pretty prominent around town and my wife always goes for that if you see it. It's some of the best barbecue I've had around. So JP knows the guys pretty well and he's, he's actually beat him several times.
Actually beat him sometimes, yep.
Yeah, so I thought that was pretty cool.
My barbecue was good.
Yeah. And JP's pretty well versed. He knows a lot of the chefs in town, like, you know, a lot of the big ones, you know, Scott Crawford and Ashley Christensen. It's, I'm sure it's kind of a small type network like we have in healthcare. Is that, is that, is that accurate to say?
Yes, actually we get together a lot. We do a lot of benefits together. That's how I meet them. And then it was just, it was a very nice community of chefs. And that's how also we keep our trends going. And then by socializing together and making sure that we're actually following what's, what's, what's new in food. So, you know, it's a great community doing this.
All right, well, tell us, what, what made you decide to come to Springmore? I know you've been in healthcare, done that for about 10 years, but what intrigued you or why'd you want to come to Springmore?
Well, I, I've done a lot of things. I've done this personal entertainment, I've done healthcare, business services. And one of the things that I inter, I was very interested in, in this community is the changes. It's, it's how it's growing. There's a lot of new things that have been implemented. Like, you know, you guys are actually doing a brand new kitchen. There's a lot of things, there's a lot of good food coming out and senior living. So I think making those changes is what excited me to be here.
Okay, awesome. That may kind of lead into the last thing and may allude to, but maybe expand on. What are you most excited to, to make happen or implement here at Springmore? You'll have a brand new kitchen, which by the way is going really good. It should be done by the end of the month. And hopefully we'll be in operating two weeks after that. It's going to take about two weeks to get all the equipment back in. And I'm sure to get the, the surveyors back out and the inspectors to get it open. And then we'll take the mobile kitchen away. We have a brand, you have a brand new kitchen. And so what are you excited about doing here at Springmore that may be some things we hadn't done in the past?
Well, like I mentioned, is just implementing new changes, new menu items, something that actually, you know, make the changes with the menus that, that needed to be changed. The new kitchen will be great. Interacting with the staff and also getting to meet the residents. I'm very visible. I have an open door policy too. So I'll be, you'll see me around and I like to talk, I like to meet people. And also I like to get feedback and implement those things and you'll see those changes.
That's awesome. Yeah, that's one of the big things that the residents really love is to see the interaction, the visibility and the feedback. That's huge. And I know you'll do, you'll do great at that. So, so I think, tell us a little quick about demonstration cooking. That's something we hadn't done as much here I'd like to do. And I know you've talked about that, maybe some ideas about in the kitchen or?
Yeah, so like, actually I was just now looking at the chef's section or chef area. Just coming out with ideas of what we can do. I like to do a lot of demo cooking and we'll, that's part of that, a lot of tastings. If we're going to implement a new menu, I will do a lot of those tastings before. So to get that reaction and, and so people get to, to see what we are doing. Maybe a little passion hors d'oeuvres, maybe a wine dinner as well. So a lot of those things are, I'm excited to do.
Awesome. Well, just before we, before we go, tell, ending on that, some, some staff members and residents got the pleasure of watching you finish up cooking actually outside. We did an interview with JP outside behind the mobile trailer, all kind of six feet apart. And, and he had two, was it induction burn, what do they call it?
It was, yeah, burners.
Yeah, so induction burners.
Butane, butane burner.
Butane burners. And so, so if you can imagine, they're only so small, you know, or only so large, I should say. So tell us what you made. It was, it was absolutely amazing just on those. So if you can imagine what he can make on an induction cooker, imagine what he can do with a full kitchen. So just tell us what you made.
So it was actually a lemon sear salmon with a, like, kind of like shred of french fries. But I did a coral squid ink coral, which is actually, is two simple ingredients, but it's more of a garnish and also goes well with a lot of the seafood. I used a lot, I did like a little salsa or lemon butter reduction with, with it too as well. So there were a lot of, I think there was five components in that dish. And, but I did it in those two burners and it was, it was fun actually because it was challenging. I've never done an interview like that, but it was really good.
Yeah, it was awesome. I mean, we got these little small tastings, like I've eaten three times the amount. But it was neat, the, the, the salmon, like salmon's real popular here. So as y'all know, the odds like that, it had a little crispiness to it. And then the shredded potatoes are, they're like, kind of like french fry sticks, you know? It was just those little crispy things. It was, it was, it was really amazing. So, well JP, we're so excited to have you here. Look forward to you being here and taking us to the next level. I know it's an odd time to come in. Meal delivery, no dining room, no catering, no special galas and a mobile kitchen. But, but the good news is they'll only get better from here.
Absolutely.
So we're glad to have you. So, so thank you and thank all of y'all for, for tuning in here. And I don't know if you have any questions or not, but I'll be happy to answer anything that may have came through. Okay.
Yeah, sure.
So the question was, I'll just repeat it. The, the question was, I wanted to know some, some, his ideas on healthy eating and low carb items and, and low sugar items. So let him talk about that.
Well, before I got, I came here, actually I opened the Origin Hotel in downtown Raleigh before these epidemic happened. And the menu is very plant-based. So it's a lot of, working with a lot of produce and working with a lot of farmers, creating that relationship together. But utilizing a lot of grains and lentils and protein as well. But very light, healthy, less butter, more olive oil, things like that, not trans fat. So those are the things I would like to implement here. So I got, I have experience on that, working in healthcare as well. So I'm very excited to just show you what we can do with that.
All right, great. Yeah, we got a lot of people that are really healthy eaters and that's becoming more and more common here as, as some of the newer residents move in. And I say newer, just kind of, just haven't been here long or they've, they've lived in different places and they're used to different, different things. You know, some vegetarian options and more plant-based stuff and more healthy eating options. We're starting to see that more and more. So that'd be awesome. That's another good reason that JP's been, different avenues and different venues and dining services and, and worked at different places to have a good background of, of all those things. So what we got next? Okay, yes, so JP is, he's our new executive chef. So JP is a Sedexo employee. So I think many of y'all remember Dennis Daly. He was here for 25 years. And, and we have been looking for an executive chef since he left. We, we thought we had one, it fell through the cracks. I think that was just, like I said, you know, sometimes blessings are in disguise. So that happened. And then we've been continuing to find, to interview other people. And then we found JP. So we have not wanted to rush to find anyone. I know that we needed a chef and was not dragging our feet on it. But we really wanted to make sure we made the right decision, had the right hire. Sedexo screens a ton of people. And then, then it brings us the ones that they think are really top candidates and we interview them. So, so yes, JP is a Sedexo employee and he is the new chef. He is the executive, big time chef right under Jennifer and George. So right there with him. So we'll see what else we got. We'll see if, you can focus back on me if JP may have, they may want to look at JP other than me probably. But, but we'll see if any more for JP. Yeah, yeah, that's all, I'm so glad you said that. That, we had amazing, Jennifer is super creative. And if you, if you know her at all and the stuff she did at Easter with the little bunny tracks down the hall and the little snacks that she's delivered, she's super, super creative. So what she did for Mother's Day was, mother or not, every apartment got one. There was a nice little box with a little sticker on it, said something basically, Happy Mother's Day from Springmore. And inside the box was a croissant, a muffin and a little mini carrot cake. So it was, it was really, really nicely done. She did that for everybody. She had staff in here before 6 o'clock boxing those up to have them deliver to each doorstep. I got so many rave responses about that that I passed on to Jennifer. The best one I got, I hope you don't mind if I say this, Mr. Bundy, I don't think you would. Got the nicest email saying he was wondering what he was going to fix for breakfast for Ms. Fay for Mother's Day. And he showed up outside of his door and had this nice surprise of the croissant and the muffin and the carrot cake. And that was just, I mean, that was just perfect. So I'll, I'll never forget that email. I actually saved that one. Those are some of the good ones I like to remember. So, so that was, that was really cool, yeah. Yeah, it's a great question. So once the pool reopens, will you be able to tie, schedule times to swim alone? I don't know how we're going to do that exactly as far as pools. You know, we have to wait until it's open. I think that's probably phase two. I think that is phase two actually. So we're starting to work on how we reopen the salons, how we reopen the pools, how we reopen the gym, how many people we have in there. So the specifics of that, we'll probably have to wait a little bit more as we get to that point. Usually we're, I like to try to be on time with that stuff, but sometimes we're about a week out after something's implemented to make sure we have it right. Again, the 10 or less started this week, but we're not going to start the exercises the next week because we had to plan and get it up and running with a schedule based on what the restrictions they put in. So once we get to phase two and pools can open up, we'll let everybody know how that will be done as far as scheduling. It will be, can we have 10 people in there? Do we have two people, one person? That goes for the salon, which I'm working on as well. I know people are anxious to get a haircut, including myself. And then also, and also with the exercise rooms as well. The question was, will the premium entrees be, can you eat those in the dining room or, or will those be delivered? Those will be delivered just like your normal dinner meal is. We're not, we will not be open the dining room until, until they allow restaurants to open up with 50 people or less or whenever that time comes. And it may be a week or two even after that. We're starting to work on that. But the, the premium entrees do start this, this, well, not today, next Wednesday, the 20th. And they will be delivered at your door just like they are a, a normal dinner. Okay, good. Thank you, Daniel. I was, I was going to go to you to answer that. The question was that a lot, a comment of enjoying the exercise videos up on the portal and will they still be available once this is all over? And Daniel said, yes. We, I think we are really maximizing our portal and using it much more than I envisioned. We hadn't maxed it out. There's still more things that can do. But during this time, I've said many times, it's paid for itself in these two months and having it available. So yes, those, those exercise videos will continue to be up after this is over. Is there an actual completion date for the kitchen? I get weekly updates from the contractor and I think JP said they were doing some spackling on the, on the walls today, I think.
Yes, I went into the kitchen and they were doing, they were doing some work and they were doing the walls, yes.
Yeah, so, so I know that the last week, they were installing the custom made coolers and freezers. And the last part will be, then they're going to do all the walls and the ceiling. And then they'll, then they'll apply the epoxy flooring, let that dry. Estimated time should be the end of this month, which is about a little more than two weeks away. Hopefully they'll be done by that time. But then be mindful, it's going to be about another two weeks just to get the equipment back in there, get it set up. And then hopefully, hopefully inspections will go within that two weeks. But the way things are going now, I don't know. They hold up on the county inspections coming in. But hopefully by the end of the month is the estimated completion time for the kitchen. Okay, it's a friendly reminder from a resident, just saying, just to remind everybody to, to pick up your mail, to get your own mail. Again, that's just been incredible, the people that's helped with that and the volunteers and the coordinators with that. But make sure you're checking it daily. The in-house mailboxes are much smaller and then we do have the bins up here for North Village. And not exactly sure where they're at in South Village. Everything may be going in your mailboxes there. I'm not 100% sure. Just make sure that you're getting your mail each day and make sure you're picking it up yourself. Nice time just to get out for a few minutes, walk down there and make sure you got room for the next day's mail. Can you substitute yogurt for milk when breakfast starts? I would, I know Jennifer said no substitutions. I don't know if that's an exception. I don't know if that's a, my menu dropped here on the floor, so I can grab it here. All right, let's see here. Um, I do not see yogurt listed on here, so I would probably say no. I said yes to coffee last week. I thought it'd be yes and it ended up being a no. So to err on the side of safety, I would probably say no. Because I know they've been really upfront about no substitutions on the menu options. Again, it's just, it's just due to the amount of time we have to do and the, and how we're delivering the meals. I could be wrong, maybe Jennifer make an exception to that, but I believe that there's been no substitutions. And I'm, I'm truly sorry for that. It, we'll be back to normal eventually. That's a good question. When will the parlors and the gathering rooms be open back up? I guess technically that, that could be done now. That's a very good point. We have, we can have gatherings of 10 or less. So we need to just be mindful of that. I will probably, just to stay in sync with everything, we'll do that probably maybe Friday or, or, or Monday morning. We're definitely not going to wait to phase two, which is next Friday. So just be mindful that 10 or less of, 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 of gathering. Residents are really good about kind of policing with each other and, and kind of reporting that. So yeah, we'll open those up by the end of the week or first, or first thing next week. So we can make sure things back set and got everything opened up and back, back on a schedule for. Thank you for reminding me of that. I actually need to, I dropped my pen. I'll highly remember, I'll, I'll get it in the memo from the recap. All right, so I think that's everything. Thank you again for allowing me to speak with y'all. Thank you for letting me address the, the gratitude gift for the employees. They were all great questions from, from residents. I don't want any resident to not feel 100% comfortable about something or, or not fully understand it or not get their question answered. That's so important for me to everybody have as much information as possible. So thank you for those questions. I hope that explained it a little more and why, and how we're handling the fun. And it's all for a good cause of helping our employees. And, and I'm glad that you, that y'all see that and I appreciate all the people that's donated so far. So if you have any other further questions about that, let me know. And we'll be sending out a recap either today or tomorrow with all the information. And again, we'll be back next week. And I really appreciate all the continued support and effort and nice comments. And it's just, again, been one of the few things that has, that's been good about this time. It's the comments and it really helps me keep going every day. And I'm really excited to come back to work because I know y'all are appreciative and I know the other employees feel that same way. They don't have a chance to tell you probably like I do once a week, but we all thank you. We're all grateful for jobs. We're all grateful to continue to have healthcare and doing something nice, a one-time thing for the res, for the employees. It's just a little something extra in this once in a lifetime event. So thank y'all very much and we'll see y'all next week.